Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the October 13th, 2020 meeting of the Alexander Board of Education, and I would like to start our meeting with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. I'd like to recognize Ms. Karen Bricksy for the pledge of allegiance.
If you all would stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Members of the board, as we are conducting our meeting, if you are speaking or presenting, you are allowed to remove your mask. We'll move on to the approval of agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll now recognize Dr. Jennifer Hefner for our honors and recognitions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is nice to get back up here again and be able to recognize some of the wonderful things that our students are doing. We will be recognizing four students this evening. I'm going to start with Kyle Sink. So Kyle, if you want to go ahead and start walking down, I am going to start reading what the awards are. Okay, well, I know that Kyle's at Lenorin and Holden is at Wilks. So, Mr. Sink, if you don't care when we finish, do you mind to come up and get their certificates? Thank you. Agricultural proficiency awards honor FFA members who, through supervised agricultural experiences, have developed specialized skills that they can apply toward their future careers. Nationally, students can compete for awards in nearly 50 areas, ranging from agricultural communications to wildlife management. Proficiency awards are also recognized at local and state levels and provide recognition to members that are exploring and becoming established in agricultural career pathways. The following students placed in the top three in state proficiency awards judged this past spring and recognized virtually at the state FFA conference or convention, excuse me, in June. Kyle Sink placed third in the state in nursery operations. Kyle graduated from ACHS this past spring and is currently a student at Lenorin University. Please join me in congratulating Kyle Sink. Austin Sink, 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 you can tell that they are brothers and the son of Mr. JD Sink and his wife. But Austin Sink placed third in diversified horticulture. Austin is a junior at Alexander Central and serves as an FFA chapter officer. Please join me in congratulating Austin Sink. As I said, Kyle and Austin's parents are JD and Debbie Sink, and they live in the Stony Point community. The next student was Holden Ritchie, but he again is also in some college classes this evening. He placed second in agricultural mechanics and design and fabrication at the state level. Holden graduated this past spring from Alexander Central. He's currently self-employed with RW Construction, and he is attending Wilks Community College. His parents are Danny and Adele Ritchie, and they reside in the Bethlehem community. Please join me in congratulating Holden Ritchie. And our last student that we will recognize this evening is Avery Cook. Avery placed first in the state in landscape management. Avery's proficiency award will be judged against others at the national level in October. Avery is a junior here at ACHS and a chapter FFA officer. His parents are Scotty and Amanda Cook of the Vale community. Please join me in congratulating Avery Cook. Congratulations, and also join me in wishing him well as he competes at the national level later this month. Good luck, Avery. I'm so very proud of these distinguished students. Mr. Sink, are any of the other teachers with you this evening, or are you representing the teachers? Okay, well, I don't see him, but tell him I said, oh, there he is. Scotty, thank you so much, and congratulations to everybody in the chapter. And Mr. Sink, if you'll come get these, I'll let you get these delivered. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Dr. Hefner. We did not have anybody sign up for public comment today. Members of the board, you have the consent agenda in front of you.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the top two reports you have, we have, we're going to postpone those, which is our auditor's report and the update from the Early College, and those will be postponed more than likely till November. I would now like to recognize Dr. Garrett Henshaw, President of Catawba Valley Community College, for an update.
Madam Chair, Board of Education members, pleasure to be with you all this evening. I want to thank Jennifer for the invitation to give you a quick update about what's happening at Catawba Valley Community College. But I promised Jennifer I wouldn't say anything about something named C-19. So we'll just leave that for any questions that go. You know, this whole thing has been built about partnership, and the opportunity to work with Alexander County Public Schools has been a true inspiration to me to see our ability to expand through that partnership by picking up the phone, finding out ways that we can connect better and working together. Everything from the support of the Alexander Early College with Jason Evans, support of CCP expansion, providing more access to college-level coursework for all students in Alexander County school system. And we're also really focused on workforce credentialing now. We have an opportunity, we think, in the areas of agriculture, trades, construction, cybersecurity, and potentially heavy equipment operation to do partnerships that begin early in high schools so that students can understand that there are viable careers right here in Alexander County. Because our goal has to be is to keep our young people here, if at all possible. You know, every time that we come up with an idea, and we're working on one right now with the schools through grants, I think about what can we do over in Alexander County? We're increasing the workforce credentials that are available at the Applied Technology Center on our campus over here. We're increasing college transfer pathways. We're adding support personnel for advising and working directly with the staff members. Because we believe that all students deserve that viable path to a future, quality future, career together. And when we are able to align our efforts and build strong communication between the systems and the college and build upon our partnerships with four universities, everyone in this county wins. And so you will see that commitment continue on as long as I'm at Catawba Valley Community College. We have great instructors, but I'll tell you, I get so excited when I see the quality of students that come from Alexander County. These students know how to work. They have a work ethic that is unique, and we need to capitalize on that. But we also need to understand that our biggest challenge will be coming over the next couple of years financially for both our school systems, our community college, and all of education in general. We're going to see impacts from the pandemic that we probably have never predicted in terms of the direct impacts on our systems. So that means we've got to work smarter. We've got to work more efficiently. And you'll find that level of cooperation and commitment from Red Hawk Nation and Catawba Valley Community College. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that any of you may have.
Do you anticipate the funding difficulties to be just general hits all across the board, or do you think there's going to be specific targeted areas?
I think there'll be focused changes with that. And so the biggest thing that we, in our system, are focused on are what are the things of value that are non-negotiable, those things that we're willing to fight for. Because we all understand that there's probably going to be some reductions in each sector. So identifying those things that really bring value to our communities and our service area will be the priority for us going forward.
Are there any other questions or information you want to ask?
I just would like to say, Madam Chair, I've been on the board for several years now, going on 12, and it's always been a big part of Alexander County schools is the partnership between Red Hawk Nation and Cougar Nation.
Absolutely.
And there's been a lot of progress. There's still things we need to do and still a lot of things that we, a vision that we have. But in the 12 years I've been on the board, just to watch the growth, it seems slow, but looking back, it's been a fabulous relationship. So thank you to your campus for what you've done.
Well, that's thanks to all of you, and I'll give you an example of what level of commitment that we bring into Alexander County. We recently received a Future Forward Alliance grant for about $50,000. Every penny of that's going into the Applied Technology Center in Alexander County to enhance our industrial systems programs and those programs that are workforce-ready. So that commitment's going to continue, and that's what we're focused on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
Okay, members of the board, if you have been to a committee meeting and would like to report on that, would you please do so now?
Ms. Chairman, with the Budget Committee met last week and went over some preliminary numbers, and Ms. Mahaffey will be sharing that with us, but I was pleased.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I went to the Booster Club meeting, I guess that was last week, and I know they're working diligently on ways to allow spectators and follow the room for the number of people that can be in a building and all that goes into that. So they're working hard to make it that available for parents and everyone that wants to come. They are also going to have their fundraiser, and I'm sorry, I don't have the date in front of me. I believe it may be November 21st. That's from the spring fundraiser that they did, the raffle. And so I will email all of you that date and some information about that. And if you'd like to buy a ticket, then Scott or I usually have those.
Any other committee reports?
Madam Chair, that fundraiser that you're referencing, is that the one that they had started selling the tickets for?
Yes.
COVID happened and everything kind of came to a halt?
Yes, and it's normally, I think it was going to be in April. It's now looking like it'll be in November, and we may still do another one in the late spring, possibly, for next year.
Okay.
It was a really good fundraiser last year.
Yes, so if you already have a ticket, then that is the same one that we're talking about?
Yes, and I feel like that you'll probably be contacted to make sure if you've already purchased your ticket, because there had been several dollars' worth of tickets sold.
Perfect, thank you.
Now more reports, we'll move on to Dr. Hefner and the ABC Science Collaborative update.
Yes, we are doing something for the first time tonight. We have a group of doctors, they are zooming in with us, and I'm going to unmute myself. Dr. Benjamin, are you able to hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Fantastic. Well, we were having a little issue. I'm so glad that Dr. Henshaw presented first because it allowed us to work through our technology issue. But I would like to welcome Dr. Benjamin. He is a distinguished professor at Duke's University of Medicine. And Dr. Benjamin, at this time, I would like for you to tell a little bit about you.
And I'm sorry for my, so does the board have the slides presentation? And if we go to slide one, I can give a little bit of background on myself and then the ABC Science Collaborative. Dr. Hefner, if that would be okay?
Yes.
Great, as long as, as the slides are coming up. So my original medical training was, in addition to doing a residency in pediatrics, a fellowship in pediatric infectious disease. That fellowship was completed at Duke. I got a Master's of Public Health in Epidemiology at University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, and then a PhD in Epidemiology at UNC Chapel Hill. I have a joint appointment in UNC Chapel Hill School of Public Health, and my primary appointment is this distinguished professor of pediatrics at Duke University. Go ahead, next slide, please. The ABC Science Collaborative, we really want to make sure that we're very clear that our role is to provide some scientific education, scientific background, to help K-12 specialists or pre-K-12 specialists such as you all make informed decisions about what you need to do. The ABC Science Collaborative does not give advice about what you should or should not do, but rather, if you want to take a certain pathway, what's the science behind that and what are the tactics and items of public health that you all can do to help ensure success? Next slide, please. Now, just as an update, this is a partnership between Duke and UNC Chapel Hill. They're over 50 North Carolina school districts actively participating. The program is expanding nationally this month. It is, it receives funding from the National Institute of Health. I gain no financial benefit as a result of leaving the program. The program has three components. It is an educational program. Those webinars are available to the public. You can see the website for that. Those webinars are on that website. I'll show you a screenshot of that website at the moment. It has superintendent sessions. I'm going to give you all an example of an abbreviated superintendent session. Those sessions are designed to give your superintendent the tools that they need to provide you with their informed recommendations based on some scientific principles. They are not there to give you superintendent advice on what he or she should do. There are common documents and lessons learned that are being developed, have been developed across the collaborative that's based on schools that are currently in hybrid for the most part and are active across North Carolina. And I apologize for the dog bark, I'm juggling homeschooling and myself. The, we do have a symptom screen that we're developing, and we have items around some embedded research questions. They don't identify students at the individual level, but basically are county-level data. Next slide, please. You can see this slide is the website for the collaborative. My colleague and co-chair, Dr. Denise Zemenda, Dr. Zemenda and I often split the districts, and so I, she has family obligations tonight during this time slot, and then we both have additional calls with other schools tonight. So you all get me tonight rather than Dr. Zemenda, although you may see her at a future call. Go ahead, next slide, please. Now, this is an example of what we go through with your superintendents when we're talking to them about the decisions that you all need to make. So this is about, this was a study that was published about overnight camp in Georgia this summer. It was thought, speculated by some at this time that children really did not transmit COVID very easily. This was in mid-June. They brought in 138 trainees to this overnight camp, 120 staff members. The median age was 17, range was 14 to 15 years, not unlike a high school. There's really no cloth mask compliance at this camp. And although the children were tested, it was about a week and a half before arriving. Now, the following week, 363 campers joined ages 6 to 19, so this is kind of like public education. They were a mix of indoor and outdoor activity, vigorous singing and cheering, and there were no masks for the kids. On June 23rd, a teenage staff member developed symptoms and was positive for COVID-19. Before I go on, Dr. Hefner, am I speaking at a pace and addiction that are sufficient and clear for the team?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yes, ma'am. Next slide, please. I think you know what's coming here, but so you can see on this slide, this is what happened at the camp. Approximately 50% of participants became infected. That was true across ages and across whether it was a camper, a staffer, a trainee. There was a little bit more infections in the children 6 to 10 years of age. There was a little bit more infections based on cabin size, but the short version here for everyone involved is clearly children can transmit, and if you don't wear masks, you're asking for a lot of infections. Next slide, please. This is from Maine. This is a camp that was really managed well. This was in the MMWR, which stands for Morbidity and Morality Weekly Report, which is the CDC weekly journal. So it is peer-reviewed. The website's there if you'd like to read the original data yourself. As we reviewed with the superintendents, this was a group that did, like the camp in Georgia, they tested at the start, but they had fastidious adherence to masking. They put the children into cohorts, not unlike an elementary school classroom situation initially. They required distancing, not unlike a hybrid situation, and they had no infections across the camp. Now skeptics may say, well, gosh, this is in a rural camp in Maine. The infection rate might have been lower than it was in Georgia. However, these overnight camps brought in children from throughout the country. In fact, 41 states where they brought in over 1,000 children. So at this time, it's kind of the peak of the summer activity for COVID-19, especially throughout the southeastern United States. And so this camp in Maine's vulnerability is much like that observed throughout this summer, throughout the country. So this is really a testament to a camp that was managed well. Next slide, please. So what's our lessons learned from these camps? There are key points. The masking is incredibly important if you want to prevent COVID transmission. Children should wear masks. They can certainly transmit from child to child. Although there was more transmission adult to child, child to child and child to adult transmission was documented through contact tracing. Compliance needs to be high. So the target here that we're talking about is in the high 90s on your percentile if you're going to be providing a safe work environment for your staff. And then distancing quite bluntly helps. Next slide, please. Sometimes I hear from, I've got two more slides on superintendent education, and then we'll go into some wrap-ups and then some Q and A. So one of the things I hear from folks is, gosh, if we just wait for a vaccine, all this is going to be over. In the United States, there are four vaccine trials that are in late-phase trials. And what the sequence is going to be, whether or not the emergency use authorization is granted in November or December or January, I'm just going to use January 1 for all of the ease of a common start date. I have no opinion as to when that emergency use authorization will be granted, but folks have been talking about, hey, there'll be an emergency use authorization. We're all going to get the vaccine. That's not what's going to happen. The first quarter, assume a January 1 emergency use authorization. The first group of people to get it are going to be people like me who care for immune-compromised children in the hospital setting as an infectious disease specialist, nurses at the front line, respiratory therapists, et cetera. In the second and third quarter of 2021, we would expect for the elderly, folks who are extremely high-risk populations, folks with risk factors, disenfranchised folks who are particularly vulnerable to COVID-19. That's what we're looking at in the second and third quarter of 2021. We're not anywhere close to vaccinating eight-year-olds at this point. And that's because no children really have been studied in these trials. It's the occasional 17 or 18-year-old who's been enrolled. But really, they're going to have to be studied before they start getting any vaccine because we're going to have to find, ensure that the vaccine is very, very safe in children specifically. That's going to take a considerable amount of time. In addition to that, these vaccines are not kind of your typical easily-stored vaccine. The first vaccines in the pipeline, not all of them, there's about 130 under study right now, but the leading contenders need to be stored at minus 70 degrees. So they need to be shipped in freezers throughout the country. They can come out of the minus 70 environment for approximately 12 hours. So we're not talking about people rolling up into the Walmart and getting their vaccine. This is going to be a non-trivial effort around supply chain, production, distribution. So that brings us really into 2022 before we start getting vaccines of any sort into children. Now, that then assumes that the vaccine proves to be safe during 2021, during the emergency use authorization. It also assumes that it's safe in children in those studies. So now you can see you're looking at a multi-year process. After all that is worked through, there's then the question of the risk-benefit ratio for children because unlike your older employees and some of your high-risk employees, children tend to do quite well with the vaccine. That's going to need, meaning that the vaccine has proven to be extraordinarily safe before physicians will recommend it, and it needs to have some efficacy. As it relates to vaccine efficacy itself, a vaccine like polio, if you all remember, we get polio vaccine. If you get the polio vaccine, you're not going to develop polio. It's 100%. That's very unlikely to be the case with COVID. It's more likely, this is speculation, we don't know yet, but it's more likely to be like the flu vaccine, which has an, which is a respiratory virus, which has an efficacy of about 60 or 70%. Reinfection, as we already know, has been documented and is possible. So this is a multi-year problem. And I tell you that because the decisions that you all face are challenging, and I would not, the science does not, the science on a vaccine means that you're going to be in this for the long haul, and you're going to want to provide a safe work environment, whatever decisions you make. Go ahead, next slide, please. Now, along the line of the safe work environment, here's some very, very good news from throughout North Carolina. Now, this is a complicated, it's not complicated, but it has a lot of information in this slide, so please bear with me. These data are available on the DHHS website. They're publicly available data. I put the county, whether or not this was a high school or an elementary school, and whether or not the folks are working with us in the collaborative. And this is limited to traditional public schools, not private schools and not charter schools, but traditional public schools. You can see on this slide whether or not it was a high school or elementary school. And this is for all children in North Carolina who are currently receiving hybrid instruction. So this is across the state. This represents a student population of approximately 500,000 students, and it's approximately nine weeks of instruction. Now, to just give you an idea, Craven is a school district that is on the order of the size of you all. And Sampson, and I'm not telling this for the school board members who probably know these data better than I, but if this is a publicly available meeting, I'm telling it for parents because I certainly didn't know the school district population across the 115 school districts prior to starting this program. The 5,000 to 10,000 students, those are like Sampson and Wilks County, and then And then Gaston and Buncombe County are greater than 10,000. Gaston is a student population of about 30,000. And they're just having a tremendous amount of success. Although they've had two clusters, you're really looking at a school district that's over six times the size of what you've got, and you're looking at two clusters involving 10 people. Now, a cluster is identified, is defined as a COVID-19 infection where the five or more cases via contact tracing are linked. So in Alexander County, y'all have a health department. That health department, I'm quite confident, is partnering with Dr. Heffner and her staff. So if y'all have a case in a Alexander County school, the health department would then work with the schools to determine, okay, who needs to go into self-quarantine? Who else has symptoms? Who do we need to contact and do contact tracing? Who needs to get tested? And then if those tests are positive, they start to link those cases to each other. If it can be shown that one case causes another, those are linked cases, okay? So you can see here that the amount of clusters in North Carolina, we're talking about approximately 12 clusters involving approximately 50 students. That's from all of North Carolina. For the last nine weeks of hybrid instruction, it represents 500,000 students. This is a very, very, this looks early data, but very, very, very successful. Now, the, with, the Wilkes one is highlighted in yellow. One of the services that we offer to the collaborative participants is if you have a cluster in your school, we pick up the phone and talk with your superintendent about, hey, what kind of lessons learned can we do from this cluster? So the cluster in Wilkes County is a little different than the cluster in Buncombe County, which is a little different than the one highlighted in blue, Craven County. In Buncombe County, these tend to be, a cluster like this might make one think, you know, are staff eating or congregating with their masks off in the break room? And Buncombe's outside the collaborative. I don't know if that happened at Buncombe, but it has certainly happened at Duke University, okay? When we get infections at Duke, it's when we're wearing a mask, much like Dr. Heffner is wearing. In fact, it's exactly like Dr. Heffner's wearing when we take care of patients. We, we, when we've seen infections at Duke or UNC, it's when hospital staff have taken off their mask and eaten lunch together in the break room, okay? So that conversation around Buncombe is going to be different than the student one at Craven, all right? And we just walked through your superintendent about what are some lessons learned. There is a county, I'll, I'm going to keep them confidential, but there's a county that initially started that did not require masking for pre-K children. And they, they, they had a cluster. And as based on that lessons learned, that county and the surrounding counties, after talking to that superintendent, now require masking in the pre-K environment. Next slide, please. So really, what are the, what are these experiences and these data from North Carolina show us? A couple of things. Number one is we get asked all the time about what metrics should we open? And I would rather encourage you to focus on the plan. That is, the plan that adheres to masking, adheres to social distancing, adheres to hand hygiene, that's strongly associated with success or failure. Whether your percent positives in your, in your community are 3% or 6% or 7%, it's, it does not predict success, okay? It is what's your plan and your dedication to providing a safe work environment for your vulnerable population. And in your case, that's your staff, right? They're the ones most likely to have severe infection. So what's the plan to protect the work environment for the adults and the learning environment for the children? Then fundamentally, this is a risk benefit decision that you're making. And that is, there will be COVID-19 in Alexander County if y'all have schools closed, and it's all remote learning. And there will be infections in students, and there will be infections in adults. And in North Carolina, if schools are closed, there will be tragedy related to COVID-19 this winter, I'm sorry to say. And if your schools are open in Alexander, there will be cases. And there will be cases in children, and there will be cases in staff, okay? And there will be, in the state of North Carolina, tragedy, whether schools are open or closed. What's extremely important is to provide a safe work and learning environment such that the risk of being in school is not markedly greater than being out of school. And if anything, the early data suggests not only is that achievable, it's being achieved right now. And in plenty of school districts, it's probably safer to be in school than it is to be out of school. Because most of the districts in North Carolina have, that are in hybrid right now, have zero clusters. So with that, it'd be a good time for me to stop, take clarifying questions or any way that I can help you all out. Thanks.
Dr. Benjamin, before you start your questions, do you mind to talk a little bit about what you had spoken about in one of the first webinars that I joined with you about the importance of the flu vaccine this year?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Okay, so that, yeah, that's important. So the flu is easily confused with COVID-19. And the flu, in a typical flu year, you're looking at the deaths of 40 to 60,000 Americans in a typical flu year. And it's a vaccine preventable disease in the sense that if you take the flu vaccine, you are at much less risk of getting flu. It's not 100%, it's about 60 or 70%. You're at much less risk of death. You're at much less risk of hospitalization. And if you do get the flu, you're in for a much milder course. The other thing that's important about, to note about the flu vaccine is that it's, it's not possible to get the flu from the flu vaccine itself. It is not a live virus that's injected into you. That's also going to be the case with COVID-19. The technology is for COVID-19 is around viral particles. The, the other thing for staff to consider is the symptoms around the flu are going to put, cause real problems for the, for staff and students as it relates to keeping schools open. And then finally, for parents who are interested in face-to-face instruction, it's incredibly important that you get your children vaccinated this year if you want to support Alexander schools and keeping the schools open. And finally, a flu vaccine is so important. It is a condition of employment at places like Duke University and UNC Chapel Hill.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, board members, I would ask that you pose any questions that you may have to Dr. Benjamin.
Dr. Benjamin, when you speak of hybrid learning, is that nomenclature the same as our Plan B that we've been operating under?
Dr. Heffner, I can hear you well. It's a little difficult with the echo. If you could repeat it, that'd be great.
Yes. Board Member Odom asks if the hybrid model that you have been speaking of, is that the same as the Plan B model in North Carolina?
Sorry, yes, that's, they're synonymous, and I'm sorry for that casual reference. You're correct.
Other questions, board members?
Dr. Heffner?
Yes.
I'm not sure if Dr. Benjamin can hear me or not.
Can you hear Board Member Brixie?
Maybe not.
No, it's going to be, it might be for you to repeat.
I'll repeat it, okay, I'll be glad to.
So the high Plan B is a two-day-a-week plan in person. How does Dr. Benjamin anticipate the data to change if you go to four days, two days, day of sanitization or sanitizing and two days in person? Does that make sense?
Yes. Dr. Benjamin, our hybrid plan, we do an AABB kind of thing where students come, if they're in Group A, Monday, Tuesday. Everyone's remote for deep cleaning on Wednesdays. And then the BB days, those students come on Thursdays and Fridays face-to-face. Board Member Brixie has asked, you know, you've seen the data from, I guess, a two-day face-to-face kind of setting. Do you anticipate that data changing if it goes to a four-day face-to-face type setting?
That, I don't have enough data. So are you talking about maintaining hybrid but being four days a week? And then the following week, a different group of children come in? Or are we talking about all children coming in for, all children who are eligible coming in for four days a week to be able to maintain distancing? Or are we talking about Plan A?
Well, we're talking, I guess, about a combination of that above. Where Board Member Brixie came with the four days is a proposal for students that are eligible with the governor's executive order in pre-K through five, coming Monday, Tuesday, being remote on Wednesdays for deep cleaning and filter changes, things of that nature. And then again, coming face-to-face on Thursdays and Fridays.
Okay, there have been a couple of counties that have done that, and they've done that with success. So let me, let me say that. I don't have permission to name them by name in a public setting, but they are typically counties with 2,000 to 5,000 students, such as you all have. However, most of those counties that have had that success first opened in Plan B. They got, and we're talking a very limited amount of data, a very limited amount of time, and they, and they did a few things. They took some time to get all their procedures and policies in place. They, then they monitored their own infections by school, by week, and they shared those data transparently with the community and with their staff. For example, on a public-facing website, for example. They showed success in Plan B, and then they moved to additional, additional days per week of instruction. So, you know, much, you know, I don't want to give advice, but physicians and public health workers tend to be of the mindset to show success on a smaller scale and then expand. For example, the collaborative itself, who remember this, Dr. Heffner, started with just a few counties, then we expanded in around the state of North Carolina, and now we're going national. We didn't start out by, you know, running around giving advice in Hawaii, for example, okay? So we, physicians tend to be extremely conservative around that. So I don't want to give any advice, but the, the kind of common phrase I hear from physicians is first, first walk, then run, then sprint.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions?
Yes. When you say you've had success, do you mean, is that, is there a percentage that you can attach to that of cases? Or is that, are you considering success zero cases?
So you're going to have cases. Cases will come in from the community into the schools. Success is, on a population basis, a limited number of clusters. So for example, a, a school district with 5,000 students would be expected to have fewer clusters, fewer cases than, say, Lake County Public School System, okay? So a limited number of clusters is an indicator of success, and a limited number of secondary transmission. So like, by secondary transmission, that is, what, what, secondary transmission is what makes a cluster, if you will. I come in, I infect my classmates, I infect my teacher, that gets to be mine of us. That's a cluster. But if I infect my classmates, I infect one teacher or one classmate, that's two infections that are secondary transmission. I, I've come into the school with infection, that's the community infection. Then I have infected someone else at school, that's secondary transmission. Okay, let's go, I just want to define terms, I'm sorry for sounding painful here, okay? The goal is zero clusters. The goal is zero secondary transmission. That's exceedingly difficult in a school district with, you know, 10, 20, 30,000 students in a nine-week period. But if we can have limited numbers there, that's what we're looking at. And there are districts at 10,000, 20,000 students that have zero transmissions this quarter. There are a number of school districts, a substantial number of school districts, that have less than 5,000 students, like, in the 5,000-student range, like Alexander, that have had zero secondary transmissions. I think that that is achievable. And that's certainly a goal for Alexander. I think it's achievable if you, if you're fastidious in your masking. There are a couple of school districts that have progressed to four days a week and thus far have had zero secondary transmission. But again, for the most part, these are school districts that showed success first in a smaller environment.
Thank you very much.
And Dr. Benjamin, we, through contact tracing, find no evidence of any secondary exposures to this point in the system.
That's correct, yeah. And then that is, and then keep in mind that these COVID-19 cases that I'm showing you, that's, that's, that's just simply the cases approximately half of are going to be asymptomatic, given the age distribution that's affected here. And then there's, but, but it is the potential for very serious infections that underlies the importance of providing for very, very high compliance with masking, hand washing, and compliance with distancing.
Dr. Benjamin, obviously, masking and hand washing, that is something that's easy to continue to enforce because we started with a very strict expectation with those things. But when we put more children in classrooms, obviously, the social distancing becomes an issue. Any advice? I know that the CDC guidelines, they say it's recommended to do it as, as much as you can as far as the six feet apart. Any suggestions for us with systems who have already transitioned to full capacity?
I don't have enough data. My comments would be speculative. That's why I'm hesitant to say them. I don't have enough data. My comments would be merely to ensure that to the best of your ability. And aside from that, the data there are really, really pretty sparse. We're looking at, you know, just, it's very, it's very, very limited data right now.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask a question, if it's okay. I'm not sure he can hear me. But I'm kind of interested, looking back at the camp study. It looks like the bubble worked, so to speak, in the main camp where they were able to keep people out. So it started me wondering if we're talking about the best way is to prevent the secondary, is to make sure that we're not having entry of someone who's symptomatic in our schools? What practices are they doing that that works best? And second, is there anything in the data that they're looking at with the clusters that would talk to bus ridership versus school? Is there any differences? Are they able to collect or catch that?
Dr. Benjamin, were you able to hear that? That came from Board Member Cooksey. Dr. Benjamin, were you able to hear that?
I broke the system.
Do you want to come over to my microphone and?
Compared to the other camp, one of it was a bubble effect. And I've noticed that with some systems, the bubble seems to work. So what works in there is it's preventing of someone coming into it that has it, stopping the entrance as far as are they more likely to have different numbers or more bus ridership?
And the buses don't appear thus far to be an extremely high-risk place with the kids. There tends to be monitors on the bus in addition to the bus driver in a lot of these districts. That's number one. The bubble effect is not, although I commend you for being aware of that, that's really much more important and much more feasible in a university environment. Occasionally, it's applicable in a camp environment. The main situation is a little bit different than the true bubble. This is why universities spend so much money testing. So let me give you a little bit further detail on that. My son, who is training to be an officer of the Marine Corps, is at a military school in a university. And is, he's a cadet, he's in a warm environment. They tested all those young men and women. And they have roommates. They tested those young men and women on rides on campus. And then all stated, you're not going to leave campus under any circumstances if you want to keep your status here as a face-to-face student. And then they also, of course, require masking. On the first weekend, two students stepped off campus property by, it appears to be by about a foot and a half from the description of the school president, who immediately sent out an email to all families, staff members, the local media, the town council, and every student and alumni, explaining the situation for the two cadets, outlining the consequences. And there has not been a cadet to leave campus since. They've had zero infections. In contrast, you're going to be in a situation where kids are going to come in and out of school every day. So they're not going to be spending the night in the high school, right? And I don't mean to be humorous there, but that, there's a lot of school, there's public school districts that are trying to get to a bubble environment. And they're spending a lot of money on testing that I have not heard from Alexander County Schools, thankfully. They're getting ready to invest a lot of money trying to set up a bubble. And that is, that's more achievable if you're in a overnight situation. I'm sorry if I overanswered that, Dr. Hefner. But that's occasionally a question that I get, and I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you. Other questions?
One clarification that, you know, us that are old school that have heard all our lives that if we didn't have a fever, we weren't contagious. With us doing temperature testing on every student coming in, are you finding that to be the best indicator? Or is that an indicator?
Dr. Benjamin, did you hear what the question was about symptoms?
Yes, yes, ma'am. I understood the question being, gosh, with a lot of other infections, if you don't have symptoms, you're usually not infectious. And that's what the real rassles about COVID. And then the second part to that is temperature testing and effective screening because COVID can be kind of sneaky and can infect people when you're not having symptoms. And that's a whole lot of why COVID has been so much more difficult to control than the SARS pandemic 2003, which was a virus similar to SARS-CoV-2 or COVID-19. You were really not infectious.
Until you.
Before you had symptoms. With this coronavirus, you can transmit, and a whole lot of transmission gets done when you don't have symptoms. Temperature screening is, depending on your state, is required. It is not a great use of resources in the sense that every school district should comply with the state recommendations or state requirements. But it is not an excellent tool. And I would not overly burden my staff or school bus drivers with a series of temperature checks in an effort to maintain control over the virus. Checking symptoms, and Duke is developing a symptom checker app, phone app and computer app that you guys can have access to once we roll it out in November. That can help you as far as line of sight managing your school district from the superintendent's office and from the school itself at a local level. But it doesn't circumvent the need for the other mitigation strategies we've talked about. So helpful for symptoms. It translates to the family, hey, take this seriously. But it's, temperature checks are not as reassuring as we originally hoped.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, final call for questions for Dr. Benjamin.
I have one final question. How many days of in-seat learning are the students undertaking at Duke University in class? Is it five days a week or is it remote? How is Duke operating?
Dr. Benjamin, were you able to hear the question?
No, ma'am.
Board Member Odom asks, how many days face-to-face learning are the students undergoing at Duke University?
It's a much different situation because we have the resources to do the frequent testing. And we're talking about, some of the schools are being, some of the classes are being held virtually. Some of them are being held face-to-face. Some of them are at the bedside, so we're masking for medical students. It's tough to make an apples-to-apples comparison. However, Duke University, Davidson, Norwich University, Western Carolina, these are schools that are having, Duke and Davidson, Norwich, tremendous amount of success. Western is, I had one of my sons graduate from North Carolina Public Schools and is now at Western Carolina. They're having what I would call a reasonable amount of success. They're able to stay in school down there. There are universities that are having success with this pandemic, despite having children and young adults live indoors and even have rooms.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, Dr. Benjamin, thank you so much. Would you speak just a little bit about the webinar that's scheduled for tomorrow evening?
Yeah, so we have a weekly webinar that goes off. It's available for all school staff and board members and leadership. And then it's recorded and it's translated in Spanish. And then we provide closed captioning. And this week, it's on some of the secondary transmission. So we'll be reviewing some of the data that I presented and other data from throughout the state. Later on this fall, we're going to cover sports. And we'll also do a few, a couple of town halls that'll be on a monthly basis. A live Q and A that's available and open to the public as well. The recordings are available to the public on the website.
Wonderful, thank you. Last week's webinar was on school nursing. And I know that our lead nurse was able to watch that and said that she actually learned a couple of things. But also, more than anything, it confirmed a lot of the practices that we have in place. So that made me very happy. So thank you again, Dr. Benjamin.
Yeah, I'd say, Dr. Hefner, y'all got a lot of good things going on in Alexander County, at least from my eye, you know, as far away as I am. It looks like y'all have some really solid stuff in place. I have a lot of respect for the staff and the leadership and the board down there. I know it's a very, very, very difficult, challenging set of decisions that y'all have to make, take everybody's safety into account. I just really appreciate collaborating with you all and the privilege, if in some small way, you know, our group's able to be helpful to your efforts. That's our privilege and we appreciate the opportunity to do that.
Thank you again. Have a great night.
Thanks for that. That was tremendously helpful.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Board Member Sellers, I'm trying to get logged out of the Zoom. Okay, so that we can proceed, but thank you.
Well, if you would like to proceed with the superintendent's report, that's next on our agenda.
Okay, thank you. This report is attached to your agenda, and it's actually a brief one this month. The first thing I would ask is that you join me in congratulating Jessica Esposito. We were notified late on Friday afternoon that we have been awarded the Digital Learning Implementation Grant for Alexander County Schools, the total amount of $150,000. And then I don't know what this meant in the letter, letting us know that we had been chosen. But in parentheses, it says, "Based upon available funding." So that makes me a little nervous. But anyway, the award is in the amount of $150,000. I just appreciate the time and effort Jessica committed to preparing and presenting the application for review. As things progress with the grant, I will invite Mrs. Esposito to come and make a presentation to you all about the grant itself and how it will impact student and staff learning within the system. The second bullet, this year, as in years past, we are going to observe National Principals Month in October, with Principals Week being celebrated October 19th through the 23rd. Principals Day will be celebrated on Friday, October 23rd. And then we will be recognizing our leaders with a small gift that will be delivered to each of their schools throughout the rest of the month. But this recognition has been dedicated to celebrating our principals, and we include assistant principals in Alexander County. Some special highlights have been released on social media. I saw some of that myself as of yesterday. And the group, like I said, will have some special goodies delivered to their school. I just want to stress how hard they work, their commitment to children and staff, but most of all, their leadership. You know how very important that I believe leadership is in any organization? And we have some wonderful leaders in this system. Our principals and assistant principals devote themselves to their schools and their communities every single day. I would just ask you to join me in saying thank you to them throughout the remainder of the month. And I would be remiss if I didn't put my hashtag on this particular comment, "Leadership Matters," and it matters more now than ever before. The third bullet, I received an email today from the North Carolina High School Athletic Association stating they are working on the next updates relative to beginning sports on November 4th. They are hopeful they can release these updates by the end of this week. But if not, Q Tucker said no later than Monday, October 19th. So stay tuned. As I learn things, I will share that with you. And then lastly, also attached to your agenda, you see a list of the facility repairs and renovations that we developed and that you all approved last November. They are attached to your agenda. And it just gives you a monthly report of the things that have been completed, those that are still in progress and such. So that is for your review. Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hefner. I'll now recognize Ms. Sherma Haife for our whole business. It's our second reading of the policies.
We have three policies up for second reading tonight. And I'd like to ask for approval of Policy 3410, Testing and Assessment, and 3460, Graduation Requirements. And we will bring back the webpage development for a third reading next month.
Members of the board, you've heard the recommendation. It's their motion to approve Policy 3410 and 3460.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. And we'll continue on with first reading.
We have six policies up for first reading. We'll get a comment on those, and I'll bring them back next month.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Haife. Dr. Hefner, I recognize you for our return to armed survey results and recommendations.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. This is attached in your agenda as well, and you all know that it was provided to you earlier. Some things have been tweaked, and I made those notations on the original presentation when we were still gathering some information, such as through the Transportation Department. But I want to start this presentation by stating the obvious. We have people on both sides of this fence when it comes to transitioning back to 100% capacity in our school buildings. That being said, we will have some people that will be happy after a decision is made. And we will have some people to be unhappy after a decision is made. On that note, what I want to do for you tonight is just to present some data from both the parent and staff surveys, along with some recommendations that have been made by department leaders for the school system. So we'll get started. Dr. Chloera, if you'll help me, I'll try to give you a signal. Or if you see me flip my page, you'll know that I'm going to the next page. But I'd like to start with parent survey results. When we sorted this information, it was sorted by grade level just in order to keep a handle on class sizes and that sort of thing. I'm going to mention this particular item a couple of times. But the General Assembly in North Carolina, they set class size limits for every public school system in the state. And this is an example of one of those mandates. A first-grade classroom in the state of North Carolina cannot go over an average of 18 for the system. So that means that when you take all of your first-grade classes in the system and you add up how many children are in each classroom, and then you divide it by the number of classrooms, that average for the system cannot exceed 18. But the statute reads that no more than 21 in an individual classroom. So you can only go three over what the average is for the system. So we just broke it out to begin with by grade level. And you can see the kind of responses that we had from parents in the different grade levels. I have been posed with a question this week. Well, why in the world did you survey parents if they? if they had children in middle schools or the high schools? This only really pertains to this first phase, to pre-K through 5th grade students. And my answer, my polite answer back to the parent was, well, we eventually hoped to get all of our children back in classrooms at 100% capacity and we wanted to go ahead and start gathering as much feedback and data as possible. Surveys, they can be disruptive, they are also very time-consuming and that was the reason for rolling it out to all parents, pre-K through 12, or actually, we did not survey pre-K, K through 12 parents, okay. So the next slide, we broke it out by school and what you will see not only will be the number of responses, the parent responses for the school, but also what that looks like percentage-wise at each of our facilities. The next slide pertains to bus transportation because that has been the biggest, I guess, hiccup for us because we have combined bus routes for middle school and elementary school children. And the question was, will your child need bus transportation? And you can see the responses there. The blue, yes, my child will need to be assigned to a bus route, which led us to believe they have not been assigned. Yes, but my child is already on a bus route, was red. No, I will not need bus transportation for my child. And then the green, I can provide transportation, but if there is room on the bus, I would like for my child to ride the bus. So you can see that overwhelmingly there, no, the majority, and again, I say, of parents who completed the survey, said that they did not need bus transportation, but you can see that we did not have 100% completion with those surveys. All right, the next question was, so when will you need bus transportation? This was optional as far as answering this question, that's why the difference in response rates. 333 responses and you can see that the majority needed for both AM and PM routes, some needed for PM only and very few needed it for AM only. And we just wanted to get a feel for what we were facing there with AM and PM routes. Parent overall findings. Those who had no preference as to whether we go back on a full-time basis or at full capacity, you can see that that was 3%. Those who did want to go back full-time at full capacity was 39%. And those not ready for full-time totaled 58%. And again, you can see, you're going to have people with different feelings and things, but everyone's opinion did count in this survey and that was the purpose of doing the survey. A breakdown of the overall parent findings, you know that I said that we had 58% that were not ready for full-time. Well, that came from a combination of 34% felt more comfortable in a hybrid setting, 7% in a full virtual academy, 17% being phased in, 3% again, had no preference, and then the 39% wanted the full-time. I just wanted to show the different things that people felt more comfortable with if they were not ready for full-time capacity. The next series of data that I'll share with you come from the staff surveys and we had 413 staff members to respond. And this particular slide is pertaining to question number two. Do you feel it is safe for pre-K through 5th grade students to return to school full-time with limited social distancing, health protocols, and wearing masks? And there you see that 10% had no opinion, 38% felt that it was safe at this time, and 52%, excuse me, felt like that it was not safe at this time. The next slide shows, you know, I couldn't break it down for parents because a parent is a parent is a parent. But for staff members, I could break it down, not with specific names, I did not want to know that, but I wanted to know the capacity that they serve the system. Because you can see that nurses may feel a little differently than a non-certified staff or an administrative staff. So that's all that this slide does, is break it out by the number of people and the role that they were in when they completed the survey. And then you can see there that obviously nurses, 83% felt like that they were not ready to go back. And then you can go across the board and see this, but again, this was made available to you in the agenda information. Overall staff recommendations, they were given a couple of options here as far as what they would feel comfortable doing. You can see overwhelmingly, 49% felt more comfortable in a hybrid situation, which is what we are currently in. 25% felt good about a phased-in approach. 21% felt good with full-time face-to-face four days a week. And then 5% felt good about full-time face-to-face, full-capacity at five days a week. All right, then we have some recommendations. When the governor said we could go back to school at full capacity as early as October 5th, that sounded very easy. It sounded good, it really was what we all wanted to hear. But then when you start putting the nuts, excuse me, the nuts and bolts together and all the different pieces that go into operating a school system, it suddenly became not so easy for certain departments in our system. And I wanted to get input from those department heads as to the recommendations and how to make this happen and the safest way to make it happen. I said earlier that transportation has been, to this point, the biggest hiccup in trying to make this happen. And the reason being is because we, like I said, have combined bus routes. We have middle school students riding with elementary students. And elementary and pre-K students were given permission to go back at full capacity. That permission was given by the governor. However, middle school students were not. So middle school students who ride buses still have to ride that bus under the Plan B. And in Plan B, it is required that you can only seat one child per seat on a bus. So that gives us about 22 to 24 children per bus, and that is if we had a child in every seat. So our Transportation Director, John McCurdy, he reported to me that he and his staff, they are working on separating bus routes so that we have kindergarten through 5th grade students on buses and then we have middle school students on other buses, since, again, they are operating under that Plan B. We will probably not have all of that finalized until Friday. And the reason being is because it's time-consuming to go back and recreate bus routes and separate those out. The good news is, is that we have some extra parked buses at the bus garage and we also are combining some high school routes and doing some different things to come up with additional buses because we know that we will need at least seven additional buses than we're currently running to do that and to do it safely. Now, the second part of the hiccup in all this is if we will have enough drivers to drive those extra buses. Because if you've ever looked at our webpage, you will see that we have bus driver vacancies all the time. And we are using a lot of staff to drive buses already. So if we can get the bus routes separated out, children assigned, get the extra buses ready to put children on, if we have bus drivers ready to drive those extra buses, then we could be ready to transport children in grades K-5 as early as Monday, October 19th. Now, running the double routes will make, it's very likely, it will make middle school start times even earlier than they are. If that is the case, those principals will be contacted with that information before the close of the day on Friday. The next department that I'm going to speak about will be from a couple of different areas. It comes from our Maintenance Department, that director is Chris Campbell, from Dr. Chloer, who is working on a lot of things on the HR front, and then Dr. Curry from an educational front. Chris Campbell's recommendation in how to make this happen and how to make it happen safely is to maintain Wednesdays as an all-remote day, to do deep cleaning, to stock supplies, and to change air filters, the kinds of things that you cannot do with children in classrooms. We also do HVAC repairs on Wednesdays and we're doing our very best to keep HVAC systems running because that certainly is critical in keeping schools open with good air quality. Then Dr. Chloer weighed in on that. She said that currently, many staff members are monitoring bus routes and taking temperatures and doing a lot of things before the school day actually begins. And if any of you know anything about a classified position, those are hourly employees and they are only employed for 40 hours per week. So what we have been doing with those people who are helping do those extra duties, if they are classified employees, we give them trade time on Wednesdays. That has been the all-remote for everybody day so that they do not exceed 40 hours per week. Because when they exceed 40 hours per week, we have to pay them that overage, the 40 hours, at time and a half, and we do not have the extra funding to make those payments. Then Dr. Curry weighed in on the demands for teachers as they are planning. They're doing more planning and more work than they've ever done before because they've been teaching face-to-face and preparing remote lessons and different things, but also with parent and student contacts, small group remediation, and then of course, any kind of specialized testing that we may have to do through the Curriculum and Instruction Department with Dr. Curry. She has recommended that we maintain Wednesday as a remote instructional day for students as well. School food service is the next category as far as the next bolt in keeping all of this together. If you would go ahead and click to the next slide. We have been serving about half the number of breakfasts that we served last year, the same month of the school year, and about one-third the number of school lunches. I cannot speak to why participation has been so low, I don't know. In September, we paid close to $150,000 in salaries and benefits and only recouped just under $135,000 in meal reimbursements. And that shortfall of $14,000, that does not even include groceries and supplies. And of course, this shortfall is concerning, but we are continuing on because we do want all of our children fed. We're even now going to try to send some weekend meals on the buses and with car riders of students, but only a couple of schools have agreed to try this because, again, we are trying things that we've never tried before. And like Dr. Benjamin said, you don't jump into some of this just full force. You have to do some trial and error, or, you know, do some test runs, a test pilot, whatever you want to call it. But we are going to try doing some of those creative things to get food into the homes on the days that children are not in school and on weekends. We continue to serve most of our meals out of the high school cafeteria with very limited meal pickup at the other school sites. We have 39 full-time staff members working in school food service, 15 part-time staff members, and 13 substitutes. And we continue to rely heavily on the commodities. I will have to say that the cafeteria staff, they have been gems when it comes to making new recipes and using these bonus commodities that are received. That has helped us to be in a financial situation as good as the one we are in with only a $14,000 shortfall for a month. So kudos to Kathy Cottle and the managers at each site. I will say that we received some good news over the weekend, that the decision has been made to extend free meals to all children through the end of this school year. Now, that is a wonderful change because everything was supposed to end and students were to go back to paying beginning in January, but the decision has been made, and I think it was at the federal level, don't hold me to that, but that that will be extended through the remainder of the school year. Now, what I need you all to do is encourage participation because if we are not serving meals, we cannot be reimbursed for them and we, again, will have shortfalls. So help me get that participation up. I know that some principals have jumped in there and have done some things to promote breakfast and lunches at their schools and we have seen some nice increases at some schools, but I need all of the community to help us out with that. The next slide pertains to the Virtual Academy. And we've had a lot of interest in, you know, what in the world are we going to do with children who are in the Virtual Academy? You all know that Melinda Glenn is the coordinator of Virtual Academy and she has surveyed the parents of those children. We did have 174 surveys returned and this was total enrollment in K-5 Virtual Academy. So these were only elementary responses that we looked at. And they had options, and you can see it broken out by the particular grade levels, what they wanted. If they wanted to stay in Virtual Academy until the end of the school year, you can see what those responses were percentage-wise, but then also how many children that involved in each grade level. Then their next option was to transition back to face-to-face classes at the end of the first semester. You can see the percentages and the number of students that we're talking about. And then lastly, immediately transition back to face-to-face classrooms and the grade level percentages and the number of children. Now, on the next slide, the average class size for grades K through 5, it says K through 8, but we're only going to talk about K-5 today, you can see what the state mandate says. 18, 18, 18, 18 for grades kindergarten through 3rd, 4th and 5th are a little higher, but then, of course, that is the average for the system and an individual class cannot exceed more than 21 in each of those classes. And that's not just in Alexander County, that's in every public school system in the state. Well, the reason that 2nd grade is highlighted is because look at where we were already before we opened it back up for any of the virtual students to come back. The good news is, if you'll flip back to that other slide for me, please, Dr. Chloer, when you look at 2nd grade, the number of children that the parents wanted them to come back to that full-time face-to-face, it was only four children in 2nd grade. So I think that we're going to be okay there unless they're all four at the same school. But at least at our smallest schools, we have either two classes per grade level or a class and a half. So we should be okay in 2nd grade, but that was the reason that that particular grade level was highlighted. Okay, then going to the next slide, these are all human resource kinds of things. As we make some of these transitions, whenever the board decides it is appropriate to do so, as you can see from those virtual surveys, there will be some fluctuation when children and parents want their children to come back to face-to-face. And that could impact the number of virtual teachers that we have and the number of teachers in classrooms at particular schools, depending upon where they land in the reassignments. We currently have 15 Virtual Academy teachers at the elementary level and, like I said, we're going to reevaluate those and get firm numbers in each school for each grade level. But there is another HR issue that we have, and that is, we are down to 43 active substitutes. And we have 10 permanent substitutes and those are assigned at each of the different schools, with the exception of our Early College and Student Success Center. All of the other schools have a permanent sub assigned to their school. Well, if you're saying, well, what's the big deal in that, Jennifer? Well, in 2018-19, we had 147 active substitutes. In 2019-20, we had 82 active substitutes. Today, we have 43 active substitutes. So the thing that concerns me as superintendent is, in years past, if something happened and we couldn't get a sub to cover a teacher's classroom, you know that children are never left in rooms by themselves unattended. They have to be with an adult to be supervised. So a lot of times, what we would do, we would either split the class in half and put half in Teacher A's classroom and half in Teacher B's classroom, or we would divide them up maybe and put them all in the gymnasium with a class with PE or whatever the case may be, but they were always with an adult. Well, with these mandates and the social distancing, we're going to be to capacity in our classrooms and we're not going to be able to do some of those things. So everything is wonderful until... of those things. So everything is wonderful until we reach the point where we won't have subs to cover classrooms. And then you know what that means. That's when I have to send either classrooms, grade levels, whatever the situation may be, home on Plan C until we can get staff healthy enough to get back into those rooms and get the supervision covered. So that's an HR concern. From August 17th through October 7th, we had 63 teacher absences that needed substitutes, but no subs were available to take these jobs. And like I said, we've been covering them with teacher assistants, but if we see more and more infection and people being out and quarantined and different things, I just want to make you all keenly aware that we could get into staff coverage issues. And then lastly, again, the teacher assistants and other classified staff are working extra hours, and as I said, we've been flexing their time on Wednesdays, that they work part of a day on Wednesday so they do not exceed the 40-hour limit per week. Next slide is power school considerations. And there are specific times in a school year where it's easier to make transitions. The first transition or the first opportunity would be at the end of the quarter, end of the first nine weeks, whatever you want to call it, and that is this Friday for our school system. Also, the end of the semester is an easier time to transition. And I just wanted to let you all know that depending on whatever you decide, report cards may be delayed due to the time needed to switch over at the elementary schools. Class allotments may need to be adjusted or balanced, which I spoke to already. And I hope that attendance issues will not arise, but I will tell you that we are already facing some pretty serious attendance issues and disengagement with some of our children. And those are children who are supposed to be coming face-to-face and those that are supposed to be working remotely. So. The next slide is student support services. From Dr. Hilton, you all know that she oversees all of student services, and these are just thoughts from the field of nurses, social workers, and counselors. She oversees all of those groups. They just caution to try not to move too quickly with too many students. We don't want to have to go backwards and go back to Plan C where we're all virtual, just as soon as we try to get everyone back in the school. So again, that's just that proceed on a small scale with caution kind of thing. We're entering into the cold and flu season. We will see more fevers, coughs, and other symptoms. Again, as Dr. Benjamin said, a lot of the symptoms mirror COVID-19, and students or staff could be quarantined until they get a flu test or a COVID test just because the symptoms are so similar. School nurses are spending a large majority of their time monitoring and tracking, contact tracing, and different things. So I will tell you that in some discussions with other superintendents as recent as last week, some of their immunization requirements have fallen through the cracks, and now everybody's scrambling to try to make sure that children have the proper immunizations because again, we only have six nurses for the entire school system, and they have been very, very tied up with COVID kinds of things. But they have other jobs that they're required to do also. And then students need to be in school to receive mental health support. We are seeing a great deal of anxiety, a great deal of depression, a great deal of fear, just different things. And even, I hate to say this, and I hate to describe it this way, but we've even seen grief. And you think, well, what in the world could children be experiencing grief about with COVID-19? Think about all the things that they have missed. Think about if you missed your senior prom, if you missed the prom at all. Think about if you've missed your sports season. Think about all the things that they have missed. And so there is a grieving process with COVID that we need to be aware of, that children are experiencing. From the nurses specifically, I'm not going to read through all of those, but again, just the caution that we have had cases to continue to rise in the county since we returned to school on August 17th. Social distancing, again, they are certainly advocates for making sure that we maintain that and we enforce all of those things, such as wearing the mask, washing the hands, the things that we've already been doing. And even though the risk for children is low, it still happens, and this is still very serious. It's a pandemic. And they were just overall concerned that if we move too fast, if things, if the dominoes start to fall, we could find ourselves back in Plan C with everybody fully remote. So again, just caution from the nurses. At-risk students and staff implications. Again, Dr. Hilton oversees exceptional children, and not all full-time staff in the county can access substitutes for their professions. And an example of that, a speech therapist. You don't have a substitute for a speech therapist. For one thing, people aren't credentialed to do it and don't have the skills to be a speech therapist. So you know, there was concern there. If one of these people becomes quarantined or ill, we may be obligated to offer compensatory services. Because when a child has an IEP, you have to follow that IEP and whatever it says, you are required to do whether the staff member was quarantined for 14 days or not. So she just has some concerns from the exceptional children's realm with some of that. A lot of the children in the EC program will most likely not participate in in-person instruction. And the balance of teaching, and these are EC teachers primarily, of teaching four to five days a week in person and then being expected to do the same thing remotely, it will just be very taxing on EC teachers. And you can read the examples she gives you of a teacher with a caseload of 32 students. Before and after school care, we are continuing to operate that program at the sites that you see listed, Bethlehem, Ellendale, Hidnite, Stony Point, Taylorsville, and Wittenberg. Sandra Miller has done a beautiful job as far as communicating to you all the rooms that are being used at each site, the measurements of those rooms, as far as also square footage, the licensing per child, social distancing, how many they'll hold and such. And then the very last column, she has listed for you at each of the sites, how many children could be enrolled before they are at full capacity in the before and after-school care program. Social distancing is recommended, but not required according to the guidance for returning to full capacity with before and after-school care. But again, she still has licensing, excuse me, requirements. And as long as they wear masks, and the students will not be allowed to share supplies or anything of that nature, then she does feel like that, and also she did say that they will be required to spend 30 minutes outdoor play. So you know, mask breaks and things of that nature, people have been very concerned because before and after-school care, children could be there if they are in both programs. They could be there from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM at night. And so that mask break and outdoor play will be very important for them. But you can see how many children we could enroll and before we're at full capacity with before and after-school care. Then one of the last things as far as departments, Dr. Hilton and I met with Leigh Ann Wisnitz from the Health Department last Wednesday to discuss the governor's orders and to run some reentry ideas by her. She does feel comfortable with a phased-in approach, and this is what was presented to her, that pre-K through 2 students return at full capacity for the remainder of the semester on Monday, October 19th, and the schedule being Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, remote for all students, and then Thursday, Friday, face-to-face. Virtual Academy remains an option for students already enrolled. And then applications for students, parents who don't feel comfortable with that plan, we will take applications for the Virtual Academy. But again, those things don't take place overnight because you have to redistribute and reallocate and do different things. So. Then the next phase that was suggested was grades 3 through 5, return to full capacity on Monday, November 9th. Again, that Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, with Wednesday being remote for cleaning and such. And then just the understanding that I want the public to know that members of my staff are in touch with members of the Health Department every single day. They have conversation every single day about symptoms, about contact tracing, about positive results and different things. And Ms. Wisnitz and I will work closely to examine metrics. We will talk about if we have emergence of cluster cases and different things, but it's something that is already discussed daily, but would be discussed even Next slide. This is a national dashboard, excuse me, and all it really does, it has been done through Brown University. It is one of the pieces of data that was provided from the ABC Science Collaborative about data that's been collected. And I guess the thing that's promising with the data that was collected is that that data shows that almost 200,000 children in 47 states from the last two weeks in September revealed an infection rate of 0.13%. And then staff in those same situations, 0.24%. So what that really means is about 1.3 infections over a two-week period in a school of 1,000 children, or 2.2 infections over a two-week period for a group of 1,000 staff. And you know, even in high-risk areas of the country, the student rates were still well under half of a percent. And I open it to you at this time, board members, for questions for me.
Dr. Heffner, I have a question because my biggest concern is children not being in class and not learning. Because I think we're doing our children a disservice, and I think they're going backwards a little bit. And do you have any data? I know that the beginning of the grade testing has been done, and can you share that if you have it?
I do. I happened to grab that this afternoon before I came over to the auditorium. We have done a couple of different kinds of assessments in our elementary schools. One you'll hear is called iReady, and that's really kind of a screener. And what Dr. Curry told me about that is, the results of iReady were not as bad and as drastic as she thought they might be, but they are still lower than what we are used to seeing. But a state test that has been administered since coming back to school was the third grade, beginning of grade test. And I can tell you that we have had an increase in the number of Level Ones in the system. And for those of you who are note-takers, and this is for all the third grades combined throughout the school system, 51.37% of the children scored at Level 1, and that's the lowest level that you can score. 22.8% of the children scored at Level 2. 8.81% of the children scored at Level 3. 15.5% of the children scored Level 4, and 1.5% of the children scored at Level 5. And so that is a decrease of what we've been seeing in past years in Level 5s. Level 4s remained about the same. There was a decrease in the Level 3s, a decrease in the Level 2s, and an increase in the Level 1s. And what that clearly shows is that since March, children have not, for the most part, and I'm not pointing fingers, you know, parents, most parents wouldn't know how to teach children to read. I think the best that they could offer would be to do worksheets with them or to read to them and have them read aloud to them at some point during the day or night. But you can see that these averages, they've been impacted by us not having face-to-face teaching from certified teachers. Other questions?
Dr. Heffner, I've got one. Of course, education is huge. That's our business. But the safety aspect of this, I feel like our number-one job as a board member is safety of children and staff. And us being the largest employer in the county, of course, that's a huge issue and a big responsibility. We're going to have to decide. Is there any thoughts on feeling maybe we're rushing a little bit getting started with every department really maybe not hardly ready to go? And do you feel like if we give a couple of weeks of time to get everybody ready would benefit us? And is there pros and cons to that?
Well, the pro would be, you know, I would be telling you a lie if I said that I don't have some fears about this virus. I do. I monitor the numbers closely. I share numbers with you all every Friday so that you all know what's going on and that sort of thing. It helps us as far as the things that we are fearful of. I will admit this to you, I was fearful of coming back period on August 17th. Every day for the first week, two weeks, whatever, I felt like that I couldn't take a deep breath because I was just ready for it to fly apart. Because this is like nothing that I have ever dealt with before. It's like nothing any of us have. But in looking back, it was much smoother than in my mind it played out to be. So the pro would be, I guess, to err on the side of caution. The con is, is that that's three more weeks for our younger children to be without as much face-to-face as I guess we could offer if we try to go back in that phased-in approach. And I wish I could look at you, Board Member Bowman, and say, I know the answer. I know what's going to work, and this is going to be the safest thing to do, but in all honesty, I don't. I just know the things that I am willing to commit to, and that is to social distance as much as possible, to enforce the wearing of masks, and to wash hands a lot. And hand sanitizer, Chris Campbell has done a great job in keeping those supplies in every classroom and every school. I can tell you the things that I can commit to, but I can't tell you how this plays out.
Thank you. Dr. Heffner, would you mind to have them digress back to the survey slide where it broke it down between administrators, certified and non-certified, please?
Yes, sir. Dr. Chloer, that's the one with the staff breakout of the ones that answered the percentages of those staff. Thank you. That's it.
And before I lead into that, I first want to say I want to thank the administration and the staff and the people who actually took the time to participate in this survey. Now, I will say that statistics and percentages and data and things of that nature are things that a lot of us study and are very keen in helping us find decisions. And I'm of the opinion that the number of respondents on the parent survey, that's rather low, which means that there was a rather insignificant amount of parents who did the survey. Now, I can tell you that if you have a telephone, that telephone has rang, and it rings every day with updates. So I didn't know about it. It's probably not a sufficient argument. So ample time has been given. But question two, do you feel it is safe for pre-K 5 students to return to school full-time with limited social distancing, health protocols, and wearing masks? 44% of the administration, 52 of the teachers, you can read the graph for yourself. The numbers speak for themselves, albeit I'm not sure that that's a true, a full reflection of the parental intent of all parents. So no matter what we decide, is not going to be a popular decision. But I'll just go ahead and cut to the chase. I, as one board member, and two of us represent Taylorsville School District, I can't comfortably say that 100% capacity for K-5 is a prudent thing to do at this time, based on the survey. And I appreciate the ABC presentation and the information from the doctor who is a PhD at Duke University. The prevailing difference there is in his statement, there were certain things that he couldn't be specific about. And they solve big problems, major health-related issues. But sometimes answering a simple question is difficult, and I understand where he's coming from. But I know our UNC students are not face-to-face four days a week. And that's what we're contemplating for K-2. And that's what we're contemplating for K2. Which leads me to this. For some reason or another, when I pay my power bill, I can't go in the office and pay my power bill. For some reason, if I want a Chick-fil-A, I have to go through the drive-thru or the call-in. For some reason, I can't go in the dining room. If I want to pay my water bill, I cannot go in there, in the office, and pay my water bill. There's something to this with entities that are far greater than ours, far larger. And I'm an advocate of waiting till the end of the semester, redistribute the same survey, ask the same questions, and then revisit at that time.
Yes, Mr. Cooksey?
I'd like to go back to the slide that showed the COVID-19 school response dashboard, I think it was called. It's near the end.
Yes.
I just want to, I was trying to read this. Sorry, when I first read it, I had a little bit of trouble. I want to point out a little bit that what that's showing is that the rate of infection increased from one week to the next week, if you're looking at it. I just want that sort of, that point wasn't quite pulled out of that. That when you compare it, if you're looking at it, you see. The interesting thing, and I have a couple of questions that came out of this. How are we, the comments? So let me hit my questions real quick, Dr. Heffner, so you can answer them. But how are we going to deal with the virtual academy if there's an onslaught of kids who want to go to the virtual academy? And we say that they have to do an application. Are we prepared to accept them? Or are some kids going to be forced into staying full-time at first? There was that phrase in there that they would have to fill out an application.
Well, I'll be honest with you. It would be very difficult for me to support a child going to fully virtual when they have not been doing what they were supposed to on the three remote days they already had. So some of those things will be taken into consideration when the application is filled out. I have been very concerned with disengagement from... Most recently, I read the report that Mr. Gordon Palmer did for the high school and the numbers of children that their parents are being contacted directly and that sort of thing. So I'm concerned about disengagement with children who are supposed to be doing things either in the virtual academy or remotely on the three days that they are not coming to face-to-face.
I'm not sort of referencing that quite, and I actually accept your point. It's more so that what if a family does not feel comfortable going back to it?
Then if there aren't any reasons that, and I'm not going to be the keeper of, you can go, you cannot. That's done at the school level. That's not my job. That's what the principals and teachers do. But if there are no reasons or red flags that would show us that they could not be successful in a full-time virtual setting, then they would be accepted. The thing is, that doesn't just happen overnight. Like I talked about those numbers and shifts, and we have to stay within ratios. And those virtual classes are held to the same teacher ratio, teacher-student ratio as a face-to-face class. But if there were no concerns that would be showing as to a reason they couldn't be successful virtually, then they would be accepted.
So they could, if you have more students wanting virtual, of course, you're going to have less in the classroom. So you don't need that teacher, so they could go virtual.
So we would likely have to assign, if that's the case, then we would have to reassign teachers who have been teaching face-to-face to start teaching virtually.
Okay.
Although this is kind of, y'all both kind of illustrated, it's getting a little bit hard of one of my concerns is that we're talking about Monday. And reassigning teachers between now and Monday or reassigning and moving this piece is asking a lot.
Well, we've been having principals work since the governor made the announcement to try to get firmer numbers. We knew we wouldn't get a 100% response rate on the survey. We never have. I doubt in my tenure that we ever will. But principals have been working behind the scenes with families and been making contacts that they have a much better idea of what we face and what we have to do in the next three days to make this a reality for K2 on Monday.
I just have a fear of the, I call it the yo-yo effect. Reading this is that we're going to, and this is, I've struggled all, after I've read this. I've read this. And I'm, and sorry, for those of you who might not have seen it till tonight, we got it a few days early. But when I read it, I was kind of surprised and shocked. I actually was not as thought where I was going to be. But when you read it, I was actually kind of, it pushes you a little bit to stay at B. I'm just going to be honest, is how, when I read it. And that's not exactly where I was kind of at. And so when I read that, when I was reading the data, reading the responses from people, that's where I ended up, sitting there reading it. And then I started thinking of, and I'm calling it the yo-yo effect, that what if we move it to A, and we have clusters that started popping up, and now we've got to move to C? And now we've got to move to B? Again, maybe to grow back to A? And are the classrooms going to have time to do the desk changes? And all these little things that none of us who are in the classroom have time to think about. To us, it's just very generic, you know? Bring the kids back to school. And it sounds very simple, but when you talk to teachers, it might sound very complicated. I'm sitting here reading it. Another one of my questions, are we talking about going to A? Is that meaning the kids are going to be in the cafeteria eating the meals? Or are they still in the classroom?
They're still in their classrooms.
So there are all these sort of questions that start to come up, though, that are logistic issues. Because now you're not bringing 10 meals, you're bringing 20 meals to the classroom. Now things have changed. The kids distancing in the classroom has changed when we're talking about this. So these are my concerns. And my concern sort of led me to this spot of wondering, are we trying for a target date? Are we prepared for that target date?
And I'll say this, the 19th was, again, when I talked about that power school issue, it's, this Friday's the end of the quarter.
Correct.
So it just seemed like a natural fit. But if a different date is better, I'm not opposed to that. If we need to slow it down a little bit more and push that date out further, I'm not opposed to that. Just know that. But I just, it was picked because it is the beginning of the second nine weeks.
But also with Mr. Cooksey's question, do you feel that the principals are prepared, if they do have an onslaught of applications to the virtual academy, to handle that between now and Monday?
I would need to speak with each of them personally. And to be quite honest with you, I had to put out so many fires today. It just didn't happen. I could get a better feel for that after I talk to each of them tomorrow.
Dr. Heffner?
Yes.
I spoke with teachers, and I didn't talk with, I didn't speak with a single teacher that does not want every child back in their classroom. They all know that. They, we know the need for that. They know the need for that. But I'm just so hesitant. I have a friend that's on a respirator right now in Statesville and has no idea how she got it. I would feel a lot better if I could go into Walmart and see everybody in there wearing masks. But I see families not wearing masks, children running around with no masks. And I just don't feel comfortable for the staff and for the children. We don't want to lose anybody. I know you don't.
No.
I know nobody here does. Whatever we do, it's going to have to be slow. And I think right now cases are rising in North Carolina. So it's a terribly hard situation.
Well, I'm proud of the mask-wearing as far as I've been in every school since school started. Not every classroom, but every school. And I have visited classrooms in each of the schools, and I did not see any issues. And they didn't get prior warning, you know, that superintendent's coming, wear your mask. They didn't have that kind of opportunity. We really only had one situation before school ever started where I was told that I had violated someone's constitutional rights by requiring that they wear masks. And, you know, I'm not going to get into, they need to probably read the Constitution a little bit closer, but anyway. And once that principal worked with that family, that resolved itself also. I've just been really proud of how the children and how the staff have followed the guidelines.
Well, I'm really glad to hear that because I, you know, didn't know, didn't have input on that. But that's very hopeful and helpful to everybody.
Oh, it was, I will be honest, Cindy, Ms. Sellers. When I walked into the first kindergarten classroom, I thought, how on earth will you get a five-year-old child to keep a mask on all day, you know, with a couple breaks here and there? But they did it. It was just amazing. I have been pleasantly pleased.
Dr. Heffner, I like the approach of splitting up the classes. I mean, K2 and then 3-5. And I don't know if you have this information in front of you. How many students are we talking in the K2? How many are we bringing back, I guess, is my question? If we brought back the K2s Monday, how many? Do you have any idea?
I don't know. Sharon, do you remember PMR? Do you have access to that on the phone by chance?
I'm sorry.
The most recent, and what that is, it's the numbers in each grade level? 343 kindergartners. 375 firsts. 391 second, but now you realize...
Over seven schools.
Yes. Yes, over all seven schools. But you realize some of those children have, they're in the virtual academy.
Okay, all right.
So those numbers would not be just exact.
Right. So if we, I know there's a lot of discussion about this. And do we start Monday? Do we start in two weeks, five weeks, whatever? You know? I guess if we're talking 2022, such as...
For the vaccine.
Yeah, I mean, if we're looking at two years, we've got to start sometime. I mean, I don't know what, two weeks makes a difference? A month makes a difference? I don't know. Our kids are, they have got to have instruction. We are in the business of educating children. And I want everybody to be safe. I don't want anybody to take that that I don't. But I think with the protocols you have in place, they're probably safer at school than a lot of places. They're going to be wearing a mask all day. They're going to be under care and supervision where they may not be right now. I mean, there's a lot of families that have to go to work, and they're going to get food. I just think our kids are at a, there's a lot of needs right now, and school fixes that for a lot of them.
Yes.
One thing I'd like to point out is that one of the hardest jobs as a board member is to separate your emotion from making decisions based on your emotion versus fact. And of course, in this political season, that's been brought to light even more that, you know, to rely on fact. And one of the facts that I had not really taken into consideration was brought out by Dr. Benjamin, which was that in rural areas, smaller systems like ours, in his opinion, there's a, if it's done correctly, and I wouldn't expect our system to do anything but that, that done correctly, that the kids may be safer in the school setting than at home. And I've not really thought about that aspect of it, as far as the COVID part. Now, I have, is the emotional part of it with, you know, with the kids not interacting with other children and the educational part. But I've not thought about the health part of it. But that just really didn't dawn on me. So, you know, that's something he considers fact.
To run in the danger of sounding like Ms. Sellers, the piece that I keep going back to is the teachers. I was shocked in the report, and by the way, I really liked the report, and I really appreciated the full breadth of how different voices were brought into this, was the fact that the substitute teacher problem and the issue that we're facing. And I don't want people to mishear me. So it's not that I'm not concerned about the children. It's that when a teacher goes out, now you have a number of students who no longer have a teacher. And so there's a number thing there. So you lose one, two, five teachers. That's really very difficult for a school to start having to deal with. And so the piece that I'm concerned with is just the timing of this. I, a lot of what I'm hearing is we'll have an answer on Friday on the bus piece. And this isn't criticism. This is happening too fast for me, in some ways, is that we'll have an answer, and now we've got to react to it by Monday, a change in school time or a change in bus schedule. I personally, if the numbers support it as far as safety and all this other stuff, I am actually very supportive of trying to switch to the kids. And I actually do worry deeply about the quality of the education, especially in these early ages where being online is probably not a great solution. So I think that I have no argument there. But I'm worried about the timing and the preparation time that we're allowing you, the school system, and the people in it to have to get ready for this. I'm not the one to talk about the right point to pick. I just, I understand the value of October 19th as the end of the marking period. But I also think that we're talking about Monday. So that sort of overwhelms me when we're talking about it. So I don't know how we're supposed to proceed, but that's just where my concerns lie.
Well, as I said, you as a board, if you think that we need more time to prepare, to make sure that we do have bus routes confirmed and parents notified, that sort of thing, I'm not at all opposed to changing the date and pushing it out some.
Would you have a target time that you think would make it more comfortable?
Well, the transportation has been the biggest hiccup. And our director's sitting at the back of the auditorium. I don't mean to shift the heat to him, but he's been working in it today. So John, would you tell me what you think would be fair as far as getting it mapped out and to get parents notified?
Well, our students have been working very hard to get the route ready. Everything that we have to say, if they feel like it, they can be ready. I do feel like it is just a little bit rushed to do. And I think, I think if we had at least another week, it would be much better to get, especially the word up to the parents.
So you think we could have it ready to roll on the 26th?
I think that would be a more realistic.
Okay. Okay. And then what we had initially was to go three weeks and see and monitor how things were going with K2 students before we then transitioned 3 through 5. Would you all think to push that back a week also? Or you all may see that we need to monitor it longer than three weeks. We just thought that three weeks, I don't know. Again, I don't have all the answers, but that would give us a little bit more time just to monitor and see how things go.
I personally think that if we pushed that second phase to where the board had time to meet for their board meeting and make a decision exactly the way we're making it tonight, based on the data retrieved at that point, and then allow a sufficient amount of time to make your plan to bring that next group back.
The November board meeting is on Tuesday, November 10th.
And if we did exactly the same thing that we're doing, that we're discussing here of allowing week and a half to two weeks, that sounds reasonable.
And I think if we have our board meeting on the 10th, you're going to have a lot more information of how it's gone for a couple of weeks.
Yes.
That we may be ready to start then on the 16th. But they would have to give, you know, that gives them time to report and say, this is great or this is a disaster. And kind of go from there.
So basically, at that point, you would be looking for action on just the K2 at this point and a later decision for 3-5.
After the November board meeting for 3 through 5.
Okay. Okay, is there any other discussion?
I think that Chairman Ryan, I appreciate your care and concern for the children because it's all about their health and mental health and safety and all that. And I think you have some really good points. But I think pushing it back like Board Member Shrum said was a great idea.
Thank you.
If I could, just briefly.
Okay.
So I appreciated Dr. Benjamin's input very much.
Yes.
And if you're, we do need to get these kids back into school at some point. We all know a vaccine isn't going to come in the next month or two. As far as the option for, and I think, I thank Mr. McCurdy for the work he's doing on the buses. But like Board Member Cooksey, I'm a little concerned about, we need a cutoff date for our parents to say, I want to be in virtual or I don't. Because I don't think it's fair to the staff, to the teachers, to be called constantly back and forth to two different types of teaching. You know, we've been very accommodating or as accommodating, accommodating as we can be. But I think that they, if we extend it for a week or two weeks or whatever the board decides, it's not going to be a situation where I think we're ready on Monday. If we have bus drivers, if we have this, if we have that. I like delineation. I would have picked the nineteenth logically, but this is too big of a decision to, to go with a convenient date. I would say the twenty-sixth or the, even the week after, if that's necessary. But I want, I, I want the staff to also be considered, as I know the principals and you do, and here's what you're going to be doing at least for the next three weeks. Because I can't imagine how hard it is to reinvent a school system every two months or reinvent your job description and your teaching style and your lesson plans every time. I mean, they're doing it, but I'm sure it's at a cost. So I'd like to give them a little bit, I'd like to give the parents and the families a set time. If, if the board supports that, to say, I want, I want to go, I'm going back, I'm not going back, I want virtual, I don't want virtual, whatever their situation is that fits their family best. Have a, a date, and that way you can, the, the principals can allocate the staff to be able to know what's coming. But I, I think we all know we've got to get these kids back to school. Everybody wants the kids back to school. I, I agree with pushing it out just a little bit to make sure that when we come back in November, it's going to be a success story, and we can roll the next phase in. And then like, like Dr. Benjamin said, you have a success at a, have success at a small level, you know? And I think we've done that.
Yes.
With the Plan B, our system, I, I think our numbers have been really, they've been great. I want to say great because one case is not good. But they've been fairly stable, and we, we haven't had the secondary infections. We've been pretty good about keeping the entry into the school of, of the infection. And I think if we take on too much too soon, that might be a concern. The other piece is that Dr. Benjamin mentioned is fastidious adherence to the rules. And I hope that that continues because that's what's going to send us back to, to, that's what's going to send us all back home.
Yeah.
So no one likes them. I'm talking so I can actually take a breath without the mask on, but I'm kidding. I, I think that has to be just, it's, it's not a dress code. It's not optional. And I hope that everyone adheres to that so we can have success at first level. Then we can have a second level, hopefully progress relatively quickly and see how it goes. So that's kind of my feeling about it. And I do appreciate everyone's efforts in this remarkable, unprecedented situation.
So with, with Karen, Ms. Bricks's recommendation of the date and the, the deadline and stuff, is October twenty-sixth a reasonable time to get the buses ready and notify parents?
I think so, because like I said, those conversations have been taking place. And, and we've been, obviously, we weren't terribly successful with the survey. So we're, we're going to make personal contact to make sure that our, we have some hard numbers going into the twenty-sixth to make sure that we've done all that.
And that should give the principals enough time to juggle in person versus virtual if they need to do that?
Well, the principals don't really do that. Dr. Chlor really does that and reassigns teachers and that sort of thing, but yes, we'll make it happen.
But that should, that, is that enough time is my question?
Yes.
She's giving the thumbs up?
Yes.
Alright.
Would you mind to go back to the slide, please, where the administrators, certified, non-certified staff? Would you mind to go back to that? You were just there, you were just there. So do you feel sa, do you feel that it's safe for pre-K five students to return to school full-time with limited social distancing, health protocols, and wearing masks? And so forty-four percent of your administrators thought that it was safe to return? Is that correct?
They're not safe yet.
Or not safe?
Fifty percent thought that it was safe.
Okay. And of your teachers?
Thirty-five, yes.
Okay. And your non-certified?
Thirty-five.
Okay. So within three weeks, we'll have a plan to integrate K two and then revisit three through five. Is that, is that what's being stated?
I think what's been stated is having K two students back at full capacity on October twenty-sixth, then report how that has worked at the November tenth board meeting. And then if the board so chooses, then the three through five students would return on November sixteenth. That's what I have in my notes.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion? This is an action item. I'll reiterate what you just said. The discussion is to start K two on October twenty-sixth, report back at the November tenth meeting, and then we'll decide at that point if we want, or if it's a good timing to bring three, five into the elementary schools. And if so, that would happen on November sixteenth.
And Madam Chair, is this with what was suggested, a Monday, Tuesday, remote on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct. So is there a motion to accept that recommendation?
So move.
Is there a second?
I'm second.
Okay. All in favor of accepting the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
So we have three opposed and four yeses, is that? If you're, you're a yes.
Yes.
Raise your hand if you're a yes. Okay, and if you're a no, raise your hand, please. Okay, so motion carries for three.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we will go over our budget, and I will recognize Mr. Our Budget, Ms. Mahaffey, for our twenty-twenty-one budget. Thank you.
As Board Member Shrum mentioned, the Budget Committee did meet on October the seventh and reviewed the budget. The total budget this year is fifty-three million, six hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And you can see how that's divided among the different funds. Sixty-three percent, or sixty-two percent of our budget are state funds and fourteen percent local funds. This is the chart, sixty-three percent state funds and fourteen percent local funds. Again, the next chart shows that a significant portion of our budget, eighty-two percent, is in salaries and benefits and eighteen percent in operational expenses. The benefits increased this year, which is always a major of importance to the budget. Retirement went from nineteen point seven percent to twenty-one point six eight percent, which was a, a difference of one point nine eight percent, almost two percent across the total budget. Health insurance remained pretty steady this year. Another driver in the budget was we allocated three hundred thousand dollars for PPE and cleaning supplies. This year's county appropriation is seven million, sixty-five thousand, sixty dollars, and that was an increase of two hundred and sixty-five thousand, sixty dollars. Fund balance this year, we increased our fund balance, which is something we haven't done in several years, by one hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars. This happened because we, when, we continued to pay people after we stopped having in, students in school, but we, we were able to save on costs like transportation. We did not travel, we did not do staff development, and our utility costs lowered. The next thing I would like to review are our COVID funds that we have received. These funds came with some restrictions. The funds may only be used for necessary expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency. Funds may not be used for revenue replacement or revenue shortfall. Funds may not be used for expenditures that were included in the budget as of March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty. And funds may not be used for expenses that have or will be reimbursed under another federal program. The rules for these funds seems to constantly change. We have been spending money since last March that we're now given rule, new rules on how to spend. And so I'd just like to say that we're making the best decisions on spending this money with the information that we have at the time. PRC one sixty-three is the CARES Act, and we received nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars. From this money, we're paying eleven virtual teachers, the coordinator for the virtual program, and a school nurse. Millersville Christian School also received nine, nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-three cents. PRC one sixty-nine, School Health Support, this is a grant, a two-year grant, and that, that we will hire a new school social worker. PRC one seventy, Supplemental Instructional Services, fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. And this money will be used for remediation for students. The next group of funds will expire on December thirtieth. The Summer Learning Program, in that program, we, we use that money for staff development for teachers and the purchase of devices, when we purchase devices for K twelve students. For several years, we have been using our half-cent sales tax to pay leases on devices. But we purchased one thousand, one hundred and fifty new Chromebooks and eight hundred and thirty iPads. They were not all covered with this money, but we'll see as we go through how that was done. I'd also like to give a big thank you to our Technology Department. We received with the new leases over three thousand devices, and they were able to configure those devices and get them in the hands of the students when school started this year. And we started buying them last March. So I think that that was just a phenomenal thing for them to be able to do. PRC one twenty-two is Mental Health Professionals, thirty-one thousand, oh, fifty-six dollars. This has been especially problematic for us to spend because it can only be used for contracted services of a psychologist, a social worker, or a certified school nurse. And those are very hard positions to find under a contract. Non-digital Resources, PRC one twenty-three, the nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars will be used to pay copy costs for schools. PRC one twenty-four was also used to help pay for the student devices. PRC one twenty-five, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars was used to supplement the school nutrition program that helped provide student meals during the pandemic. PRC one twenty-six purchased nineteen laptops for school personnel. PRC one twenty-eight was to purchase hotspots. The problem with this money was that it cannot be used to pay the monthly charges on the hotspots for the service. It can only be used to divide, to buy the devices. We have also received from the NC, NC School Connect devices that have a one-year service, and these are provided free to us. So we will, we will use those before we are able to, before we use the money for just the devices. PRC one thirty-two was an EC grant, and that's just to supplement the EC pro, services for EC students. PRC one thirty-four is called a low-well supplement, and we're going to use this money to cover the cost of devices, to purchase a server for the CTE program so that they will be able to do their classes virtually and some other expenses that we will incur. And then PRC one thirty-five will be used for cybersecurity. We have moved to putting our linked financial software and our media software with, with companies that host the service for us, so we will no longer have anyone accessing our network from the outside. The total of these funds was one million, nine hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars. That's all I have for my presentation, but I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
I don't have any questions.
Any questions?
We need to approve this.
Yes.
Is there a motion? Is there any discussion before we?
No, we have any questions.
Is there a motion to accept the budget as presented?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair, before you move to the next topic, I, I think when most folks aren't aware when drafting a school budget, that school systems, we're dependent on other organizations and other funding models. We can't raise our own revenues. And, you know, and we can't borrow money. If we propose to build a school or a gymnasium or something of that nature, we have to ask the Alexander County Commissioners to incur debt on our behalf. And the building that we're sitting in, that debt was incurred by the Alexander County Commissioners, and it was paid for in large part with half-cent sales tax. So when you go out and you make purchases at Walmart or any of the local businesses, half, half of a cent of that sales tax helps pay for the sticks and bricks of Alexander County schools. And, you know, with a budget of this amount, about seven million of that is local money. So local money is a very important part of a school budget, but it's relatively small in the scheme of the entire budget. But we're, we're very thankful for it. But when, when, if citizens don't understand that, you know, all school systems in North Carolina, we depend on the state allocation based on the number of students we have. And we depend on those funds. We can't raise funds, we can't set rates or taxes and generate revenue. So we're always dependent upon the federal government, state government, grants, and the Alexander County Commissioners. Those are the funding sources for, for this budget. So it's, it's not like we can create a revenue stream. Sometimes I wish we could, but we can't, we don't have that within the general statutes in North Carolina. So I don't think we come up with an arbitrary number because everybody, we, we're beholden to everybody, the feds, the state government, and the commissioners. It's their money we're spending. It's cer, it's certainly not money that this board generates on its own. But I appreciate the hard work of the staff. We're compared to larger systems, and, but we don't have the resources that other systems have. But I can tell you, from a performance-based model, our, look at our buildings, look at our buses, look at our schools, our employees do far more with far less and have greater test results than many other well-funded school systems. And if you don't believe me, just go online and go buy the numbers. There's many websites that break down every school district in North Carolina, how much money they have, what kind of staffing they have, and, you know, our small system competes at a very high level. And the reason we compete at a very high level is because of our employees, and that's from the custodian to the superintendent and everybody in between. And that just didn't happen one time. It's, it's pretty much year to year, and it's happened when other board members, other than the one seated here, pass boards. Performance has always been at a high level in Alexander County schools, but we'll always be dependent on someone else's dollar.
Thank you, Ms. Rodham. Is there anything else?
Just one other quick thing. With our comfortable threshold being at 2 million, it is very nice to see that upward trend going away from that 2 million because that was starting to get scary. Yep.
Been a while.
Okay, at this time, we'll move into closed session, pursuant to General Statute 14331811A6. Could I have a motion, please? So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.